Call the meeting to order, please. Everybody take their seats. I'd like to report that this afternoon we had a workshop on enrollment. And then in our closed session, just before this, we had a conference with our labor negotiator, Dr. Andrew Pulver, as well as our other labor negotiator, Dr. Sherri Cropp. And now we're into the open session. And Dr. Martinez, would you like to leave us in a flag salute?
Sure. Please stand. Please, Dr. Andrew, raise your hand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I introduce all the special guests, but you're all special guests, so we'll move on from there. And we first have on our agenda our certified personnel and classified personnel report, as we do together. Dr. Pulver?
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. We are moving our personnel reports up because we have a couple introductions, and it's so nice to see so many people in the audience here as we are prepared to introduce them. So we recommend approval as submitted.
Okay, so motion would be in order to approve those two reports.
I also move that we approve the certified and classified personnel reports as presented.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. And now we're onto a really exciting part because Megan Wyman has our first student board report, so welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Cropp, cabinet members, friends, family, and community. My name is Megan Wyman, and I am this year's student representative to the board, and I'm very excited to present to you my first board report of the 2016-2017 school year. So this year at Los Alamos, we started great even before the school year even started. The week before school started, we had our annual Link Crew. Link Crew is an orientation for freshmen led by upperclassmen. It's actually a club at our school, and it has many fun games and activities. I personally remember my freshman year, one of the games we played, we ran up and hugged each other and had to pop a balloon in between each other. So get really close to people that you might not otherwise get close to. They split up into small groups, like I said, led by upperclassmen, and they kind of show them ropes around school and ease their nerves before they start their first day of school. Something really awesome about Link Crew is every freshman who attends gets a free dance ticket to our Welcome Back Dance, and that's one of the reasons why our Welcome Back Dance is the most popular, because freshmen just get to go for free, and there's no reason why they shouldn't go. Another really cool thing that Link Crew did this year was they had an ice cream social the first day of lunch. So it was a really hot day, and any freshman out there in their little lunch area got free ice cream, so that was really cool. Next, we had our first football game the Friday before school started. It was at Cerritos College, and it was against Long Beach Poly. It was an exciting game all the way through, although we didn't get the outcome that we really expected, it got the entire school pumped for our season of football. It was really cool to see the freshmen's first high school football game and the seniors' last first high school football game. Yeah, and it just got everyone excited, really excited for the upcoming football season. Starting off, the first week of school, our Friday was jammed pack, jam packed, but that's the best type of days at Los Alamos. It started at lunch with our pep rally. We had Cornhole, a very special guest. We even had our football captain speak in front of the school, telling them how excited they were for their first home game. Teachers were able to receive free lunch on the lawn. And right after that, oh, also at the pep rally, the band and song and cheer were performing to get right in front of all at lunch. Right after the pep rally after school was our first ever home football game, and I emphasize the word "home" because for the first time ever, it was at our John Barnes Football Field on campus, which was totally awesome. Tickets sold out, the student section was filled with all kids in their best Hawaiian attire, because right after the game, we had our beach and on back, back to school dance. So it was just a fun night for everyone and a super cool experience to start off the first week of this school year. So like I said, at the pep rally, we had a really special guest, which was our very own Los Alamos Olympian, Rachel Fetal. Rachel graduated from Los Alamos in 2010 and played water polo and volleyball for the Griffins. She and the rest of the U.S. Girls' Water Polo Team won gold this summer at the Rio Olympics. She came at the pep rally, and she spoke, and it was really inspiring to hear her story and to know that she grew up in the same community as all of us did, and she's inspired, and she was able to inspire all of us because she's done such amazing things. I actually got to meet her personally when she came down from the stage, and her gold medal was very heavy, but she was just the sweetest person, and it was really cool to see that she came from where I come from, and she's still so rooted here in Los Alamos so much about what, so much about her and just what she is. So not only in Los Alamos, but all over the district, people were celebrating the brand-new school year. And for example, Lee Elementary had an exciting new event to kick off the school year. On the day before school started, they posted the class list for students and parents, but this year, teachers stayed when the lists were posted and were able to meet the new students and parents to celebrate the beginning of the 2016 and 17 school year. PTA set up tables, they were selling Lee apparel, and even their mascot Leo the Leopard was around taking pictures with students, and students received popsicles to celebrate the new year. Along, along with us, along with Los Alamos Meadows High School, we had another Olympian at Weaver Elementary, Kimmy Craig, who's a three-time Olympian, also a member of the gold-winning USA Water Polo Team, was able to come and speak to the Weaver Elementary School and inspire them to follow their dreams just as she has. Also really exciting for Hopkinson, the kids enjoyed their brand-new two playgrounds, and they're really grateful to everyone in the district for providing those to them, and you can just see their smiling faces. They had the best time at recess, enjoying those new playgrounds, and they will throughout the whole year. So moving on to a middle school, they celebrated their first-ever Web Day, which means Welcome Everybody Day, and kids and parents got tour of the campus, students got their schedules, lockers and locks. They took pictures with their mascot, Ed the Eagle, mingled with ASB students, while PTA told, sold t-shirts and sweatshirts. They also had popsicles for the students, and it was a great way to start off their school year. Something that's really important to me, and I think everyone here in our district, and something that makes our district so special is our community. So I want to make sure that this year, a big part of my board reports is about our community, something special that's happening in our community. So for example, just this past weekend was the 39th Annual Seal Beach Arts and Crafts Fair. It was on Saturday and Sunday. Although sadly, I didn't get to go this year, one of my favorite aspects of the fair is the chalk art. It's all around the sidewalks, and kids and adults can go ahead and draw and chalk, and there's some beautiful masterpieces all made in chalk. There's also local artists displayed there, and there's live music throughout the whole, throughout the whole event. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Megan. It was wonderful to see all the things about the other schools. Yes, very nice. Okay, next, we have my report. And basically, what I want to talk about is all the back-to-school nights we have been having and will be having. And the opening of school is always a very exciting time, but the teachers want to let the parents know what's happening in their classrooms, as well as what to expect for the year. And so because Weaver is on a year-round schedule, they have theirs on August 11th, and then the two middle schools were September 7th. And I called parents the next night and said, "Why is it all together?" You know, because teachers kind of want to get it over with and make sure the parents know what's going on. So the next night, Thursday, September 8th, we had the one, the schools that are in Rossmore, besides Weaver, the four, and then Maga's will be this week on the 15th at 6:00 p.m. And then we have, I believe this is new, I don't think we've ever had the open house at the Child Development Center, and you'll see the various places, because there's one at LAE, and at Lee, and Maga, Rossmore, and Weaver, and they will be having an open house for the child development. So there's going to, there's two different classes at PM and AM, you'll see at LAE, and those have different timeframes there. And then last but by no means least, Los Alamos Meadows High School's going to be on Wednesday, September 28th. So if you've been to one, good, you've learned a lot, I'm sure, and if you haven't, we hope to see you at the ones that are coming up. And that's my report. Next, we have Dr. Cropp.
So while they're pulling it up, I'm going to talk a little bit, if I could. So we are really blessed, honored, privileged to have the teaching staff that we have in Los Alamos Meadows. And part of that really is, yes, we believe we hire the best, and that they do extraordinary work, but we also very purposely have a professional development program, and a big thank you to our Ed Services Department and all of our TOSSAs and teacher leaders. But this is just, I just said, put a snapshot of something up there. And I think it's really shocking when you look at it and you see, you know, on October 3rd, and 4th, and 5th, and 6th, and 7th, and 10th, and 11th, and you can see it move on, there's a variety of trainings that we offer all of our teachers. And it really is purposeful, and it's a five-year plan. And I can still remember, a new teacher said to me, and I reminded her, she was the one that told me that, but it was a couple years ago, and, you know, sometimes it was hard at first to get people to commit, and we probably were overzealous, and we've had to, you know, make sure now that it's reasonable. But I remember that a new teacher said, she had worked in another district, and she came to me and she said, "Oh, my gosh, this is so great." You know, at my last district, we never, we never had any training, so we never got to go anywhere. And I remembered that, and it was such a shift in my thinking, that it really is a privilege to get to have these opportunities to learn and train, and our TOSSAs are extraordinary, and so our teachers really are learning from the best. So hopefully, we're getting better in how we calendar these events, and, but our trainings are also getting better, so wanted to share that. So thank you, teachers.
Okay, next, we have a very special introduction. And Dr. Pulver, I think you're going to be doing that, the next one.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Tonight, we're going to be introducing our newest principal at Rossmore Elementary, so I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Cropp.
So, this is Amy Gusha. So I'm so excited, and I'm so excited for Amy. So as most of you know, Amy was the assistant principal at Maga, and she really did an extraordinary job, and I know they hated to lose her as well. But she really comes to us with a lot of experience. She worked mostly in Long Beach Unified as a teacher in various roles, and then she was recruited into a different system in LA where she served as a staff developer and then became a principal of a charter school for two years. And then, thank goodness, she saw the opening at Maga and came there, and after one year, we weren't looking to really have that happen, so sometimes, you know, the openings occur when they, when they occur. And so Rossmore did open up, Amy applied, and I just think she is a perfect match there. And so I called the new principals a lot, and I say, "Hey, how's it going?" And every day, she's, "Great, I love it." And so, you know, there's always newness and so much to learn, but it really is a joy. She really embodies the values that we have, and believes in all kids, and teaching and learning is passionate about her work. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Amy, and she will say a few words. Take it away.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cropp. I appreciate that. Madam President, esteemed members of the board, community, our Rossmore teachers, Mrs. Sparatos, my fellow administrators, I just, I am so honored to be chosen for the principal at Rossmore. It's just a dream come true. I feel like I've repeated myself the last year in saying that when I joined Los Alamos last year, that that has truly been the highlight of my career, because it's just so true. I feel honored to be part of a district that, all the way from the teachers to the TOSSAs, to our office staff, to our directors, to our assistant superintendents, our superintendent, our Board of Education, every single person, I feel like, really does what's best for our students every day, and I feel privileged to be part of a team that makes those choices. So being at Rossmore the last few weeks, I can't believe it's been weeks, it's been, yeah, it's been a few weeks, but it's been so amazing to see the teachers there, because all of you really are lifelong learners, and you care about the kids, and when I walk into each classroom, I see the magic. We talked this year about really being dreammakers for our students and helping students set goals and see what they want to do, and I see it every day at Rossmore. So I feel honored about that, and working with the Rossmore community so far has been absolutely amazing. I've worked with PTA, with Friends of Rossmore, and just, I'm excited to continue to make decisions that are really going to benefit our Rossmore students. And more than that, over the last year, I promise I'm almost done, over the last year, there's so many relationships that I've built with, with people just everywhere, our yard supervisors, our just people at Maga, our teachers there, our teachers during professional development, our TOSSAs that have taught me about our signature practices in one year, and have really just helped me become an instructional leader, and all the way up to cabinet, and just everybody. I know that they're always available, so I just feel so supported, so privileged to be part of this district. And I also want to thank Tim. Hi, Tim. My boyfriend, and just the, my best friend, really, who helps support me every day in just my journey and setting goals professionally, and just, you know, watches me work tirelessly, and I'm so, so excited to be here, if I haven't said that already. So thank you so much. I look forward to continuing the legacy of excellence at Rossmore Elementary.
You know, all of our schools really are special, but I'm going to say, Rossmore, the way you showed up tonight speaks volumes. Thank you. You really are there, and you're such a collaborative team, and so supportive of one another, and your attendance is heartwarming, too. I know me and all of us, so thank you. Okay, I'll sit down, but I'm not going to.
I think Dr. Martinez is going to help you with this next one?
Yes, he is. Okay. So our next introduction is why we had the previous introduction. So, so, you know, it's the domino effect, I'm calling it. So where is she? Mrs. Sparatos, come on up. All right, so Kiva has been, was, the principal at Rossmore for 10 years, and I remember that, by the way, Amy was offered a job on one day, and then I said, "And you start tomorrow." And I'm really not kidding. And then we had to call Ronnie at Maga and say, "By the way, you had an AP, but you don't, starting tomorrow." So I love when we promote from within, but it does create quite a bit of movement here. So Kiva, she comes and she says, "You know, I might be interested in that assistant principal at Los Alamos Meadows High School." And honestly, I think my jaw dropped, and I went, "What?" Because, you know, you try to anticipate the growth in your district and where people will get new opportunities, and I thought, "Really?" And then I think I called her that night, and I said, "Really?" Now, I'm not really kidding around, you know? Like, don't, you've got to be serious if I'm thinking about this, because this puts a whole new idea in it. And she said, "Yeah." I really am serious, so I think I had to wrap my head around it, you know? But she went through the full process, and I really respect and admire someone who is a principal and puts their neck out there, because she may not have done well in the process, but part of what we do in our district is you have to go through the process. We don't have a culture of appointing. It would be easier, but we don't have that culture. And so she did. She went through the process, and you know what? She did beautifully. It was heartwarming, makes me a little emotional right now, but she really did such a great job, and it really, I'm so pleased and so happy. And in this, in these careers, you know, we're a small district, so there aren't a lot of opportunities always for growth, and so she'd been at Rossmore for 10 years, and I know for a lot of us, we like new opportunities. And so I'm so happy she got that, and I too call her initially a lot. "How's it going?" "I love it." "You do, yeah." Okay. So, and I do expect that they'll love it, but I have, you know, we check in. And so I think she's really, I don't think, I know she's really happy, and while she misses the relationships that she built at Rossmore, she's really loving this new adventure and new learning experience. And so, but before we hear from her, I'm going to ask Dr. Martinez, the high school principal, to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Cropp. Madam President, esteemed members of the board and cabinet, thank you again for giving this opportunity to introduce our newest team member. I just would like to say that I am so inspired by Kiva every day. She comes fired up. Like Dr. Cropp, I asked, "Why would you want to leave those small, cute little kids to hang out with a bunch of stinky teenagers?" But being a parent of them, it was an easy transition for her. But things like coming to the very first football game, decked out in the Los Alamos Major League Griffin shirt, decorated in the office with Griffin gear, and just really being fired up has been an inspiration to our entire team. And for me personally, I really feel like I'm a student right now, because she brings 10 years of administrative experience, and so every day, I'm picking her brain on different ways to approach leadership. So I'm excited, on behalf of our admin team, we are excited to welcome Kiva to our team.
Good evening, President Russell, and Board of Education members, and Dr. Cropp, and our cabinet, and our community. I don't believe that I've ever experienced bittersweet as I have right now. The summer shuffle, which is our new phrase that we use here in Los Alamos, the summer shuffle, it has things happen quickly, and sometimes we're all excited, but we don't get to say goodbye. And so tonight was the very first time in three weeks that I've seen my Rossmore family, so it's very bittersweet. But, so thank you, and thank you to the community members for being here. It is so humbling and gratifying to have the privilege to work for a decade with the innovative and loving and nurturing team and community of Rossmore. It is an experience that very few will ever, ever get. Amy gets to experience now, and watch out, it's overwhelming. And to be part of the families of Rossmore and to establish the relationships, I feel comfortable and confident that it will remain, and our legacy of excellence and achievement will continue just as it has. But the privilege to move through K-12 with families and students, and to be a part of Los Alamos Meadows High School now, and to reconnect with families that I've met over the past decade, see children who were second graders now be sophomores, kindergarteners now be freshmen, there is nothing compared to that feeling of when somebody welcomes you back and says, "I'm so happy to see you." And it's a teenager showing that response. Every moment, my respect for Los Alamos Meadows High School grows. It is a grand organization, and it has layers and layers of systems functioning at one time. And the team, and the staff, and the community, and all of the support staff have been embracing, loving, complimentary, with arms and eyes wide open for excitement, and it has been an absolute blessing. My deepest thanks is to the board and to Dr. Cropp for taking a risk and taking a leap and allowing someone to move forward, K through 12, with a group of students. Every day reiterates the notion that change is a process, it's not an event. Change is a process. And we grow into our roles as leaders, and we stumble, we stumble a lot, but my new admin team, they are right there by my side. Today was a perfect example, and they pick me up, and they say, "Come forward with us." Change is a process. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm so excited to create excellence and continue the legacy of Los Alamos Meadows High School and provide a home for our future Griffins. And my largest thank you goes to my husband, whose name is John, and maybe you'll meet him one day, who is by my side every moment of every journey. So thank you for welcoming me to Los Alamos Meadows High School. And Amy, it is incomparable what you have by your side. They are amazing. So thank you.
And now for the most exciting part, cookies. No, but we're going to have a 10, 15-minute recess, and we would like for our new hirerees, or not new hirerees, our new principals and new vice principal to come up and have pictures with their family and their whatever.
Sherri.
I'm sorry.
Sherri and Sherri.
Oh, yes, and one more announcement. This evening at the board meeting, Dr. Barki and Dr. Cropp will be leaving to go to a meeting in Rossmore at 7:00. So we'll be taking our recess now, and
Yes, and they can leave.
Probably, when you come back, they won't be here.
So wait, 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 wait.
Patty? I'm sorry, I'm going to miss this.
Back to order now, and the first item we have is community staff participation, and I do have one card. It's from Dr. Lori Lynn Mann.
Good evening. We lost our audience.
I know.
Well, I'm Dr. Lori Lynn Mann. I am a psychologist and wellness advocate, and I'm here today to talk about something that's always on the agenda, money. Districts need it, want it, got to have it, and there's never enough of it. And we know one thing's for sure, and that's that teacher sick days cost this district a lot of money. But who can help them, right? Teachers are always getting sick, be it the flu season, taking their work home with them, working through their lunch break powered by Halloween candy to get by. They work really hard. Now, all this stress on the body increases inflammation, decreased immune system response, lowered adrenal and hormonal functioning, and all of this leads to fatigue, and fatigue leads to burnout. And burnout is this district's worst enemy. Burnout leads to lower enthusiasm in the classroom. This lowers student test scores district-wide. That doesn't look good for the district. So we're with a group called the Wellness Champions. We're with, we're a bunch of doctors, this is Dr. Adam Sandel here, that put on wellness campaigns for big companies like JetBlue and Boeing, and yes, these companies have a lot of money. And with all due respect, you're not one of them, but I did convince the Wellness Champions this year to put on one pro bono campaign. I said, "We have to do one for a school district. They deserve it the most." They said, "Well, what school district?" I said, "Well, Los Alamos, they're in our backyard." They said, "Yes." So I'm here to present that idea to you, what a pro bono health campaign for your staff would look like. First, we'd launch a health fair district-wide for your staff and their spouses and families on a day of your choosing. We set up booths where we have health screenings for immune system, thyroid, cholesterol, blood pressure. We have live music, a free yoga lesson, gyms passing out discount memberships. It's a lot of fun, and it shows that you, as a district, care about your staff's health. From there, Dr. Adam and myself lead a lecture series where we stop in at your staff meetings and PTA meetings to give quick 10-minute power health topic talks of your choice. Maybe it's on inflammation, or stress, or peak performance. We also give longer lectures that are 45 minutes called Lunch and Learns, where we stop in at maybe a teacher and service day, and we actually bring a catered healthy lunch and give a longer lecture. We'll even bring our massage therapist to give shoulder and neck massages, because the teachers work so hard and they just love it. So why do we do all this? You know, it's really community involvement on our part, it's about education, and we know that with healthcare, number one is prevention. For me personally, my grandfather taught in LA County for over 50 years, and I saw plaques on his wall growing up that thanked him for his service, and it was longevity and health. And it was longevity and health that got him there. So, we want longevity for your teachers. We want good health. We want to affect your bottom line and we hope we can help you do that. So, we're gonna go ahead and leave our information. If this is something you're interested in, some people have grants in place, that's fine. We partner with them. But for now, have a great school year and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
You would want it, right? Bring it to Mrs. Meyer.
She's our deputy superintendent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Next, we have information presentations and we have a presentation by Mrs. Andrea Reed, our assistant superintendent of Educational Services.
Good morning, Madam President, or I say, good evening at this point. I've been here since morning. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, community members. It is my pleasure to present to you today some assessment results from this past school year as well as some overall data on progress toward district priority goals. Sback scores from last year are in and we are now 100%, no longer preliminary. And our teachers, for the first time in really testing history in the state of California, have had early access to assessment data. And what this really means is at the end of last school year, after students completed their standardized test known as CASP, was really within about 14 days, our teachers had live access to how the students that were currently in their class performed. And so, this really allowed for the first time some collaboration, discussion, and some reflection with students about progress towards standards mastery as well as our instructional strategies. And so, we came into this school year really being redefined and I think purposeful from the beginning because typically in years past, we would have spent the beginning of the school year sifting through data to make plans. And this year, we were able to make plans over the summer and really start this year focused on our instructional priorities. And so, in Los Al, like many other years, our students and our teachers have made a big impact and you can see that across the board in the results of our percent of students who met or exceeded standards. So, this is a comparison from 2015 to 2016 in English Language Arts. And you can see that we had growth in every grade level across the district. And I'd like to pay a special attention here to our third grade who has 9% and also eighth grade who was up 9%. So, we really are kind of leading the pack in the county, which we'll talk about in a few moments as well. Same story in mathematics, third grade at 90% with double-digit growth, also seeing eight points of growth in seventh grade. So, kind of a different story than maybe many would have anticipated coming into the second year of CASP. So, across the country really, and on the east coast first, when this test and this new era of Common Core testing first launched, districts were seeing their test scores really almost cut in half. And so, as educators and administrators and being a parent in the community, we were really having these conversations about what to expect this first time out. And we definitely didn't see what we expected here in Los Al, right? Our teachers and students really surpassed expectations and we are doing very well. And when we look at the county rankings in a moment, you can see that we still are at the front of the pack as we were for many decades under the CST testing. And so, when we look at our CASP county ranking, third grade ranked first in the county, fourth grade, first in the county, fifth grade, second in the county in English Language Arts, seventh grade, second in the county, eighth grade, third in the county. Third through eighth grade, top three in the county in comparison to all other district grade levels. 11th grade, 14th in the county. And you can see that our percent met is still very competitive. If we look at math, first and third grade, first and fourth grade, sixth and fifth grade, ninth and seventh, 10th and eighth, and 18th and 11th grade. So, we're doing really extremely well in our third through eighth grade rankings and we have some work to do when we look at our secondary. And I think that's what this information tells us, is just one piece of information about some areas that we can work in. And I think you'll see when we look at our AP data in a moment, that really CASP data at the high school level is just one small portion of data. Where at the elementary level, it really is the totality of information that we have on hand when we look at assessment results. And so, I think this is a great map. It was sent to us by the Department of Education and it kind of just looks at third graders meeting or exceeding standards in the county. And you can see there we are at 90%. The closest district to us, Laguna Beach Unified at 81% and Irvine Unified at 78%. I really think that our growth of third graders and really just their mastery is a testament to the extreme work of our TK through third grade team and the signature practices that have been in place at that level the longest, right? These are students that came in their kindergarten year in the first wave of Common Core instruction, right? So, they've been in a classroom where talk time by students has really been the pillar, where rigorously looked at, where our teachers have been working hard to collaborate and really unify instruction across the district. So, when you look at our advanced placement data at the high school level, it truly is out of this world. We are actually 21% higher than the California average and 23% higher than the global comparison when we look at the passing rate of our students on an advanced placement assessment. So, you would think typically if we open access to an advanced placement course, we would actually see our passing rate decline and we've had the exact opposite here in Los Almeitos Unified. So, we increased this school year, this past graduating class, or past graduate, past year, excuse me, 261 AP exams administered while our percentage of total scores of 3+, so a pass on the test, increased 3% as well. So, we continue to open up the number of students who are taking AP tests and it is a board priority goal that every student take one AP exam before graduation. And as we continue that work, our students are still continuing to pass at a higher rate. So, I think this is really a testament to a K-12 district, right? Students coming in with common foundational skills and schema of learning and instructional practices that really stretch that preschool through high school experience. So, 76% of the class of 2016 completed A through G requirements. And so, we are actually up 188 students from 2010 when this became a board priority goal. And so, what this really means is we have 76% of our graduating seniors who had access to the UC system, Cal State, or higher. So, it's really just attributes our community's desire, our teachers and students' desire to have every opportunity open to them when they leave our district as a Griffin. Part of the work and why we're able to achieve that 76% completion rate is become, is really because of some of the intervention and scaffolding layers that our high schools put in place over the last couple of years. One of those being Apex Learning. So, Apex really is a very rigorous self-paced curriculum that substantially improves a student's academic skills. It's an online program that's facilitated by a credentialed teacher. And this past school year, we had 356 students complete A through G courses through Apex. So, that was actually 530 A through G courses that were completed. And you would think we'd want to go up in that number, but it's actually, we want to go down in that number. And so, from this past year, you can see we're 79 students down in terms of accessing Apex. And the reason we want to go down is we want students to actually receive A through G instruction in a typical during the school day course. And so, what we have noticed with Apex is even, even though they're out of a class, this program is allowing them to pick up a skill set of provocational skills really, that it's getting them back into a during the school day A through G course so that they're being competent learners and successful when they re-enter into a typical school day course. And another reason why our passage rates, we believe, are going up is because of the access we have to course content beyond bell instruction. And so, a great example of this would be our Griffin Virtual Lab. So, last year, we had 17,000 viewed minutes, really 3,800 views, 129 sessions, and over 300 math students regularly attending after bell instruction lectures on math content. And so, what we're really excited about is we already have four new teachers onboard for this school year, so we're expanding that into some AP classes in rural language. And this year as well, we're hosting our own online pre-calculus class. We currently have 39 students enrolled in that class for this year. Yes, Mrs. Hill.
Just the pre-calculus class, so that's like, they're not getting credit for that? That's just so that they get ready to go into calculus?
No, it's, it's course credit.
For credit?
So, for a lot of students, it's going to be accelerating their course, so maybe they don't have room in their schedule, so they're gonna be able to take online pre-cal this year in addition to whatever math class they may be registered for and then be able to accelerate them next year. Or they simply don't have room because of other areas they're focusing on, so this allows them to have math for four years on their transcript.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So, something else that I wanted to share tonight that we're really excited about is that we had 261 students from the class of 2016 graduate with a seal of biliteracy. And so, that was up 11 students from last year. And so, that really highlights, I think, just the importance in a global economy of the students who are graduating from our high school really being bilingual and then sometimes trilingual. Many of these students out of the 261 spoke three languages, right? A home language, a language that they were taught second language as English, and then a third language that they picked up at our high school. So, it really shows that we really are progressing towards preparing our students for all the options that come post-graduating from our high school, which are career and college opportunities. 63% of our seniors last year took at least one advanced placement course, so that was up 4% from the class of 2015. And something that's really important is that 72% of our high school seniors last year were connected at Los Almeitos High School to at least one extracurricular club, activity, or service group. And we know this really makes the difference in the, I'd say, the Griffin experience, connects them to the community and really gives them that sense or purpose to come to school every day and really be excited or passionate about something. And when you talk to Dr. Stone or you go to our college recruitment days, you know, a lot of the big recruiters will say, the one thing that we're looking for in every applicant is their passion about something. So, they get, a lot of students have amazing numbers, but what is it that makes you different? And so, this connection piece is where we really allow our students to find that something about them that differentiates themselves, right? That gives them their passion and makes them an individual very unique when they're applying to colleges and universities. And so, I think really what all of this data shows, more than anything, is that we really are aligned to our vision of igniting unlimited possibilities for students and that really 100% of our students can become anything they dream of. We currently have a 91% post-secondary education enrollment rate, which is, I think that just speaks volumes, right? For the work that we're doing in our district, preschool through 12th grade. So, are there any questions from the board?
Anyone? No?
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move next to another item of Mrs. Reed's, public hearing on extritional materials. Education section code requires this.
So, perfect. Thank you so much, Madam President. So, we are required annually to hold a public hearing to determine whether our district has sufficient standards, aligned textbooks and materials. So, this starts a 10-day viewing process of all of our curriculum in the district in math, science, history, social science, and English Language Arts, as we'll be looking to make sure that every student in our district has equal access and has a textbook, as well that these materials that we have are still currently state-adopted and aligned to current framework. So, we'll be bringing forth a resolution to the next board meeting.
And so, they're available for viewing. Where can they come to see that?
They can come to Educational Services Department.
Okay, Educational Services. So, if anybody out there wants to view our materials, you can come and visit and then we'll have our public resolution about that next time. Okay, then we're on to another one. Mrs. Reed, presentation of textbooks.
Perfect. So, we have two new textbooks that will be on 30-day preview in the Office of Educational Services. And so, both of these textbooks are for our sports medicine class, Principles of Athletic Training and Introduction to Sports Medicine and Athletic Training. So, we'll be coming back to approve these in 30 days and these will be in the district office as well.
Okay. And then we have the next one for you also, which is supplemental materials.
Perfect. So, we'll also be doing a 30-day preview of our Project Lead the Way Elementary Modules for Media Center at Weaver Elementary School. And so, we'll be hosting those modules in the Educational Services Department for 30 days as well.
Thank you so much. And the next item is our announcement of the school governing board's intention to reappoint to the Personnel Commission, Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board. Our Personnel Commission is a commission that helps oversee our classified personnel as a merit district. We have three representatives that serve. One is at the pleasure of the board, one is at the pleasure of our association, CSTA, and the neutral that is appointed by both. So, your representative to the Personnel Commission, Dr. Milt Houghton, is up for reappointment, should you elect to have him. His service ends November 30th and we need to announce it, who you intend to appoint now, and then within 45 days, we would formally do it at a future board meeting, or the new appointment starting December 1st.
So, do we need to just?
Just need to publicly announce who you intend to appoint.
So, I could do that, right?
Yep.
We intend, again, to appoint Dr. Milt Houghton.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we move on next to our consent agenda and I understand, maybe there is a poll?
Yes. Could we please pull 11 D's and dog?
Okay. Any other polls? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
I said no.
She said you're so far away. Okay. So, now, then a motion would be in order to approve item 11A through C and item 11E through P. P. I didn't want to say that too fast.
I'll second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And next, we have Mrs. Cottuli.
I'll move approval of 11D.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second. The reason why I pulled this item is I would like to highlight it. It has to go with Rossmore Elementary School. They are now going to be doing a program called Inside the Outdoors. This is a program that is at no cost to the school district that has been designed by the Orange County Department of Ed and it has to do with ecology, weather, and environment, environmental sciences in general. And they have curriculum that goes K through 12. I know that in our AP Environmental Science class, we've also used some of the things from Inside the Outdoors. I had the pleasure of, two years ago, of actually validating this program for the California School Boards Association for a Golden Bell recognition, which is for an outstanding replicable program. And since they've already developed the curriculum and give it to us free, it's very easy to use. And I just think it's great that Rossmore is doing this. I know some of our other schools use parts of it too and I just wanted to let the public know that we're actually getting something wonderful and free from the Orange County Department of Ed.
Thank you for that information. And so, now we do have a motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we're now on to action. And Mrs. Meyer, we have presentation of the unaudited actuals.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed members of the board, our community. Tonight, we are presenting our unaudited actuals for the 2015-16 year and any impact the adopted state budget may have on our budget. And so, I'd like to take you through this for just a moment. Won't take too long, although Dr. Barky was stating how much he would miss his presidency.
He can watch it on TV.
Yes. Many of you work in private industry and you've closed books. I've done that same thing in my career and there is nothing that compares to having to deal with governmental accounting. It just doesn't. We have to close our books and balance out eight different ways. And this year, with our new Director of Fiscal Services, Elvia Glacia, she did an outstanding job with our staff and I just want to thank her. Because it's one hell of a job. And in your doing that, they actually produce, not only closing the books and the accounting that goes with it, but 11 separate state reports that are required. And those are all within your green books that you have at your desk tonight as well as online with the annual financials that are with the audit, or, excuse me, with this evening's program. One of the things that really happens throughout this year is that how we go about closing our books and estimating at the end of the year. We do not assume that we will automatically take back money from our sites. So, when we are now doing our estimates for the budget, which is a month earlier due to LCAP, which is basically the middle of April, we for the most part assume the sites will spend their budgets. But we also know in this district that most of them don't. They may be saving it for particular purposes, they carry over some of their donations, and we don't take back their site discretionary. And that prevents the use it or lose it concept where for years, you'd walk through a school and they'd have extra paper stacked up in the corner because if they didn't buy it, the district office would take it back. That just promotes really bad practices. And so, what we end up with at the end of the year is we have carryover in our designated budgets. budgets. They find out what that is, they reallocate it, and it becomes part of the next year's budget. We also start very large projects with architect fees, et cetera, and then those tend to carry over as we go into the summer and sometimes later into the fall. This year, for instance, you know, we started the different, for instance, a fire alarm project had started, has gone all the way through DSA, and then we got the pleasure of actually having it take place over the summer. So, Hopkinson and Rossmore playgrounds are another example. They were completed before school started, but within the new fiscal year. So those project dollars that were allocated, because we had an estimate of what it would cost, moves from one year to the next year, and we go forward along those lines. So, once we do all that, our unrestricted balance in the one year goes up, which changes our budget beginning balance in the following year. Very simple, not sophisticated, along those lines. So, that's really a nice way of saying our ending balance rose, and we were happily able to transfer that into the following next year for sixteen-seventeen. Some other recaps that I'd like to talk about are our health benefits. We have some visitors here that deal with health benefits. Our actual costs for two thousand and fifteen-sixteen were approximately eighty-five hundred dollars per employee. That's down as we had anticipated, because you know, we, through negotiations in fourteen-fifteen, started an employee contribution process, which was anticipated to bring in about six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. It actually brought in about five-hundred thousand, because we had about thirty-two employees drop because they were duly covered, which is fine, and it makes up for different costs, because then we're not paying for those employees as they go forward. But they, of course, as they waive their insurance, they have to show us that they're covered by some other type of program. We don't allow people to just waive not have benefits, or there is no payout for not belonging to our benefits as well, because that just catches you in the backend. The other thing that was very nice that happened this year, and you were familiar with it as a part of the year, is the IBNRs changed. Earlier in the year, we received our IBNR reserve that had been with our third-party administrator for ten years. We brought that back in and we put it into our Fund Twenty. But the IBNR going forward that we use as a part of the calculation was also reduced in the latest actuarial by about a million dollars. So what all of that meant, in a non-accounting way, is that basically we rolled back our costs to about twelve-thirteen figures.
Oh, wow.
Which is very good. And on the next page, you'll have in front of, well, maybe, if I can make this work. There we go. You can see that the fifteen-sixteen year is just within three dollars of what we paid in twelve-thirteen. And then, of course, numbers went, started to go up as ACA and other fees kicked in, and you have higher costs every year, whether it's for pharmacy, medical, et cetera. So, we did exactly what we intended to do during negotiations, and it worked out very So, really, all of this time, as far as the budget goes, the only thing the unaudited actuals did was revise the beginning balance. There was really no other changes to your budget at this time. Tonight, you're just adopting the unaudited actuals. The one thing that will come up, that we'll talk about as we talk through, the changes that came from the May revise to the adopted state budget. The one thing that's not in our budget yet is this new college readiness grant that came about between the May revise and the July approved budget. And this is an amount per student that you're supposed to get for your unduplicated secondary ninth-through-twelfth grade population, to assist them in be preparing for college readiness. We have to write a specific plan that Mrs. Reed will be working on, and because our population of unduplicated count in that ninth-through-twelfth grade is minimal, we will get the minimum the state will give every district, which is seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we'll make that adjustment when it's time for first dinner, and Mrs. Reed has had a chance to prepare that plan and present it to you as to how we may want to use those funds. Just to recap on Prop ninety-eight, it's gone up a little over two billion dollars per year over the last three years. A lot of that had to do with how the calculations and the recovery of the state's, excuse me, state's finances as we came out of the Great Recession. But it's been a very lucrative few years, as the implementation of LCFF has gone a lot faster than was originally planned by the governor. However, you also have to realize that when you already have eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of the gap closed within the first four years, that things start to slow down. And in fact, we anticipated a small COLA at the May revise, and then there actually was none. So the LCFF figures changed only by the fact that there was a small, particular gap closing this fiscal year again. Otherwise, we would have seen no increase in our revenues for all the things that are already statutorily built in, such as the two percent increase in STIRS cost, same thing in PERS cost, our increase in potentially medical costs. We would have had no additional revenue to cover those.
So, Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Does this mean that we are, are you going to go through this right now? Have we completely filled that gap?
Can you hold that thought? And I'll show you a chart in just a minute or two. So, as I was saying, the levels did not change. If you were to see this sheet from the fifteen-sixteen year, the exact same numbers would be on it. So remember, we're funded at four different levels, depending on the grade level. You get a add-on for your K-three if you meet the state guidelines, which we've always been at twenty-four to one. We moved once from twenty to one to twenty-four to one, so we receive that money. And then there's an add-on for CTE-type education at nine-twelve. In addition to that, you get an add-on for your unduplicated count, which, for us, is very small. It's about less than two million dollars on some seventy-seven million dollars that we receive in our base funding, which you used to think of as revenue limit, now it's LCFF. That's a very small amount. And then that last column where you say, "Oh, we get a fifty percent concentration grant", not in Los Alamos. You have to have over fifty-five percent unduplicated count in your population. We will never see this.
No.
No.
Thank you.
It's just not working tonight. So to answer your question, Mrs. Hill, LCFF is now ninety-six percent fully funded. And if you think about all those Olympic races you watched a few weeks ago, and somebody would be ahead for twenty-five miles out of that twenty-six point-two mile marathon, and in that last little stretch, when everybody comes back to the TV and watches, somebody else would come along and beat the person that had been ahead all along, or something along those lines. Because sometimes, it's just hard to finish well. And you've got a lot of things happening, including this year, with the potential expiration of Prop thirty, whether or not that is continued under Prop fifty-two, which really doesn't continue it in the exact same way. Oh, fifty-five, sorry. But it doesn't continue it exactly in the same way. But from the standpoint of education, remember when Prop thirty passed, it did not provide more money to education. It kept them from cutting education to provide funding to the rest of the state budget. So again, that's what this budget, or, excuse me, this proposition would do. You have COLAs that are expected to be extremely low. Here, I said one to three percent. We may be lucky to hit one percent in the coming year. And then the boom years of Prop ninety-eight are over. We've come out of the recession, we came out of it very strong for the first couple of years, and that slowed down. So what you have, oh, you're kidding. What happened? Do you know? There you go.
Oh, we're back.
It's back. And we're back. As you can see, the first four years were extremely steep, and we rose rapidly. And now, it's going to be all but flat. We really only have four percent to close. So if there is not COLAs in seventeen-eighteen and beyond, you're going to see very little new revenue. And if they continue to, you know, statutorily, STIRS increases are set already.
Right.
PERS is set by their, the state board for PERS, the PERS state board, every year, how much they will go up. But ultimately, by the time we get to twenty-twenty-one, they will both be in the twenty percent range. There was no special funding for it, and as I've told you before, I do believe it was the best bait and switch I've ever seen. Because the amount of funding we received in quote-unquote "going back to the oh-seven-oh-eight year" is almost equivalent to what is being put back into the state coffers under STIRS and PERS.
Just like the state lottery system.
Yes.
Patty, what else happens? And I'm sorry to jump ahead, but this concerns me, obviously, because it's about a four percent, and we know the STIRS and PERS contributions will go up. And I know COLA won't be real big, but the other thing is, aren't we coming up on the, you know, the Cadillac tax on medical plans and all these other things, on our medical costs? I know we've done a great job to get them down, but aren't we, couldn't we be seeing, I mean, hearing and reading things that we could see significant rises?
Well, I understand that the Cadillac tax would come into play in two thousand and eighteen, so you're still two years away. You know they are regulating by blog between the three major agencies at the federal level doing it. So what it will be, I mean, we were told originally that the, and I don't have those values off the top of my head tonight, Dave, normally I use them, but that they would not be indexed in any way. However, everything they've said originally has changed.
Right.
You know, this last year was our first required year for reporting ten-ninety-four, ten-ninety-fives. That was the best debacle I've seen at the federal level.
Absolutely. No, I agree.
Even though you did everything they said, then they came along and would change their directions on it. So, I really don't know what will come in two thousand and eighteen, because I think it will depend tremendously upon what happens at the November ballot, at the federal level.
Right. And the reason I ask is, I mean, that's been the one thing in the twelve years I've been on the board, and I know Meg sixteen and Karen, that we've seen is the whipsaw that can happen with our medical benefits, because we are self-employed.
Right.
And if things go wrong, and we have some things happen also, we can, we're kind of the mercy of those winds. And so, just the one thing, it's one of the factors, I guess.
It is one of the factors, but I have to say, having been at the reins of the health benefits since two thousand and five, when, if you'll remember, in the two thousand and four, two thousand and five-six era, it was over sixteen thousand dollars a person, and that's when Carol handed me the reins and said, "It's all yours, babe, take over." And we changed a lot of things, and we drew a lot of lines in the sand, et cetera. And it was really only until the fifteen-sixteen year that our employees were paying, and remember, they're paying seventy-five dollars a month, ten times a year, or seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for an eighty-twenty Blue Cross plant. You can't get that going to the exchange. They still get incredible benefits, and they're providers. So, the work we've done in the self-insurance world and with our consultants and the things that we've been able to manage have been phenomenal. And if you, you know, I won't go flip back, because I think this program might die on me tonight. If you look back at that chart, it is truly amazing that we're basically at half of what we were in two thousand and five-six. So, we have other things we could do. Right now, we would be under the Cadillac tax. Whether or not we would be there in two years, it's hard to say. Depends how costs. And remember, a lot of the costs we're paying today didn't exist in five-six. All the fees we pay for, under the ACA, did not exist then. That's probably about a hundred thousand dollars on top of our regular costs right now. So, there are things that are out of our control, but those things that we're able to control, I think we've done an excellent job of doing. And managing our healthcare where our employees are out there and they see, and they're better consumers today than they were ten years ago, because they're more involved in the choices they make, but they have access to the largest networks, and they're able to get very good bang for their buck, so to speak.
No, thank you. I just see that as just one of those storm clouds we just got to look at.
Absolutely. It's something you've just got to watch.
And you've done a great, you've done a great job, because if we hadn't done it, if it was average, we wouldn't have a four percent gap. We would be upside down.
Exactly. I do think what will come in that era will change dramatically with what happens in November. I do not know. How good is your crystal ball?
Not that good.
Okay. Whoops. Come on, there we go. All right. So your reserves, six percent across the board, but remember, this is not including assigned or committed. If we did it the old-fashioned way, you'd be at about thirty percent reserves right now for sixteen-seventeen. But we've assigned and committed them, as we have now with the new law change for the last two years. And even into the third year out, you're in about sixteen percent. If things die off, you don't see a lot of COLAs, you see increases, you'll have the reserves and the time to make logical, thoughtful decisions with our partners in our unions and how we go about it. You will not have to make knee-jerk reactions that may not be the most appropriate thing. And I think that's been one of our strengths as well. You know, we're in, I think, ten years of interest-based bargaining, and we are able to look at it as a team, and we decide what our common interests are, are able to come to some very good decisions, and we've done well. Dr. Pulver, good job. So with that, I would request you approve our unaudited actuals, so that we can submit them to the Orange County Department of Ed for review and approval.
Thank you very much.
Unless you have any more questions.
Such an excellent report. Does anybody have any questions, other than the open asked? Okay, then a motion would be in order to approve our unaudited actuals.
I would be happy to move that forward. Thank you, Patty.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Diana will second. One of us will. It is a resolution, so there's a real call. Oh, no, that's the next one, sorry. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now we're on to the adoption of resolution on the GAN limitation. Again, Mrs. Meyer.
Yes. The GAN limit is something that's been around for many years. It basically lost all of its teeth when Prop one-eleven passed, but it is still required. It is a spending appropriations-type law, and it is in the file, and we've met the appropriation limit. So if you would not mind, it is mandated.
All right. Let's go ahead and, somebody make a motion of that.
All of approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a real call.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Gattulie?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes four zero. And we're on to the adoption of the Los Alamos Unified School District Resolution to the extension of number one of Magnolia's school district piggyback bid. Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. This is a piggyback bid that we, Magnolia has extended, that we would like to be able to use through the end of the year. It does have some good pricing on some peripherals.
Okay.
All of approval.
Okay. Properly moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is also a real call.
Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Gattulie?
Aye.
And Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four zero. Now we're on next to the approval of the repayment agreement settlement and release between Los Alamos Unified School District and a classified employee.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. This is not a resolution. Dr. Pulver, did you want to say anything about that?
This is just an agreement, we overpaid an employee, and it's their agreement to pay us back.
Okay. That's good, we get it back. There's agreement to pay it back. Okay.
It's public funds. And because salaries, and when you work for a school district are considered public funds, you, we can't just say.
Okay. So, it's properly moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. And next, we have the approval of warrants. Smire, any?
As presented tonight.
Okay.
So I'll move approval of the two million, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents that we looked at, sixty-eight pages, I believe, or something.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now we're on to acceptance of donations from our generous community. Is there a motion to approve those donations?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.[1682.33]
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, and please thank them profusely. All right, all in favor of approving the donations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now, we're on to communication. Can we start with you, Mrs. Hill?
Certainly, thank you very much, President Russell. As we get back into the school year, there's always exciting things to be involved in, and we had a back-to-school breakfast where all of staff throughout the whole district gathered, and that was phenomenal. Mrs. Russell and, and Mrs. Cattulli were there as well, and it was very nice to, the energy level was extremely high, and it's, it's an exciting time. And so, I also had the opportunity to go to back-to-school night at McCullough. I still get those confused, but I, I understand why it's back-to-school night, and there were, it was at McCullough, and Mrs. Allen toured me around, and we just saw some phenomenal teachers and their rooms. One of the things that kind of amazed me is that it was on, I think, a, I don't know, Tuesday or Wednesday night, and school had been in session for less than a week, and there was already work in every one of the classrooms. And so, we hit the ground running here, so we get started with teaching and learning right away. And then, I had an opportunity, I haven't had the chance to go to a football game yet. I was really, really pleased that our football team was able to play at home. That is something very special, and won't happen very often, but it was really special that they got the chance to do that. Also, wanted to make people aware, I was too tired to go to the game last Friday, and so you can now stream it. L A TV has, who has filmed our games for decades, is, now uses an internet site where you can actually sit and stream it and be able to see it live. And I think that that's tremendous for us that get too tired, and also for grandparents and people that live, you know. It's, it's phenomenal, and I really appreciate the city of Los Alamos, and I know that we partner with them as well sometimes in, in doing some of these things, so that's awesome. And enjoyed some summer concerts in the park. And then, two other things, one, I just want to say it's a little early, but I will not be at the next board meeting, but that October fifteenth is Taste for Los Al. And so, tickets are out being sold in the community right now. And so, if you haven't gotten your tickets, get your tickets for Taste for Los Al, and that is an event that we, over three thousand tickets are sold through the high school. It is the biggest fundraiser that they do in, and they do it all together. All booster clubs come together to do that fundraiser, so. And then, also, the group that puts it on, our Los Al, also has donated many, to many different things, one being the new track and field. And then, the last thing I just want to say is that Sunday was nine eleven and the fifteenth anniversary, and I think that that was the day that all of us will remember and be impacted with. And I just want to extend my support and gratitude for those who rescued us, who rescued those people, who went back into the building. And we have an incredible amount of people who put their lives on the line every day for us, and for us to be able to have the freedom we do, and I am eternally grateful for that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. Okay, Mr. Boyer?
I would just say that it's, it's a great time of the year. It's a busy time of the year, and so, I like to do things by kind of roving around. So, I mean, the first day of school, I was up early, and I'm, you know, I kind of miss not having the, feeling to take my own kids to school. You know, and I got a lot of Facebook posts of first day of school with everybody. But I took the day to, 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 to drive the school sites. And before that, I even drove, you know, kind of the weekend before, to make sure that the playgrounds were in place, in our grounds. And I just want to thank John, who's in charge of our grounds, keeping it, Patty. I, I thought our schools looked phenomenal. I was a little nervous a couple of weeks before at Hopkinson, when the, I didn't see the cement, the board, and those swings weren't there. And I saw the Rossmore had the mask, but they hadn't been put in, and, and I just, I know so much goes on with your staff, and give them my, my, you know, as a board, we just, we really appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work to get those things done, and the custodians to get the rooms ready, and, and I thought the schools looked great, you know, and when I, you know, I was stopped by at the sites and so forth, and I thought we did a great job as best I can tell for the first week there with getting kids on the bus. So, a buck a ride, ride the bus. I mean, it saves you, and we have other sites where you can actually pull up, like here, the district office, and drop kids off, they can take the bus, right? And if they have any questions about it, call John, and, you know, with your department, right, and I'll tell them where to go, where to get the kids to the bus, but it's a really gets kids off, it's a safe way to go to school, safest way out there, right? And gets kids out for traffic-wise, and I thought we do a really good job, and, and drive carefully, parents, you know, it gets crazy, and you're trying to get there, you don't want that tardy. I get it, but be, be safe with it, as we, as we do that with the kids. And the football game, I went to the first five minutes of the football game, and I had to turn, which, which was the first home game, and I had to turn around and go again to my wife, because she wasn't feeling real good, take her to urgent care, but I heard nothing but great things. I talked to a bunch of freshman high school students who loved the fact we had it at the campus, and I heard we did a great job and had our first dance there, and just, you know, when things start off on a good note, and we came back and won the game, and it was all those things, what a special thing that was. And so, and then, the state of the district is Friday, so I think, I think, I think you can still get a ticket, right, Tina?
I think you called the Leif.
Called the Leif, Leif, and they'll, and that's gonna be, I think, seven-thirty at Eagles Nest on this Friday. And Diana Hill, on Taste for Los Al is, is on Friday night, October fifteenth?
No, it's Saturday.
Oh, it's a Saturday night, October fifteenth?
Only Saturday.
Only Saturday night, and it's, it's at six o'clock to?
Ten.
To ten o'clock, and it's gonna be over at the Shops at Rossmore, right?
Six, oh, okay.
Six, six to ten at the Shops at Rossmore, again. And find any high school student in your, your community, and they would be glad to sell you a ticket, right?
They would certainly will.
All right, so that's it for me.
Okay.
Ms. Cattulli? I miss the first five minutes of the football game, and I think that was the best thing I did. But when, when my husband and I sat down, we looked at the score fourteen zip, and we were the zip, I'm thinking, oh, this isn't good. But we came back, I said, we're turning out to be a team like USC, you don't have to watch the first half, you only have to watch the second half, when the good stuff happens. What was interesting about the game, not only that, it was such a community-building thing within the Los Al High School itself, that they could actually have a varsity football game on their home turf, is I happened to be sitting in a section, and I was talking to the people there, none of the people there had kids at Los Al. They had all graduated from Los Al in the eighties and the nineties, and they just came back because they wanted to see this. This, this was so phenomenal to them, and I thought, this is one of the reasons it's so special here, is that people stay connected, and they understand, you know, what they went through, and they're just happy for other people when they get to have successes. So, I do want to say congratulations to Coach Fenton, because, like I said, when I sat down, I wasn't too hopeful, and I was proved wrong very happily. And this is a horribly busy time of year, and I went back, and I have like a whole page of things that I've done, and I'm gonna skip over quite a few of them, because they're repetitions or whatever. No one has mentioned the new employee lunch. I know Karen and I both went to that. And that's always a nice thing we do that Dr. Pulver does in his, his office, where regardless of where you were hired, you get together for, you have a, a day orientation, you see all the sites, and you have lunch together. So, and I think breaking bread is always a good thing to do to unify people. I went to leave for their kinder back-to-school night, and there's really something special about kindergarten parents, particularly if it's your first one that you're dropping off, you are just not comfortable. And the teachers did a great job, and we had parents taking notes, and I made a comment in one class, and we think this is hard, wait till they get the driver's license, and they just kind of looked at me like, where is she coming from? But it happens in a blink of an eye. Yeah, I was also able to attend the first day at school at McGaw. That was Ronnie Ellis's first day as principal at McGaw's first day at school. She's been principal for, what, two weeks or something? But it's plenty of time. And what I was surprised that I ended up doing is that I ended up walking a lot of late registers, registrants, to their classes, because they would come out, this, this child needs to go to so-and-so's classroom, and so I kept walking down the hall, and if you've ever been to McGaw's site, it was originally a middle school, and it is a physically large campus, and I got my ten thousand steps before lunch. But I'm glad I was able to take the parents and the kids down there, and that was really good. I went to Oak back-to-school night, and that was really great, seeing all the teachers and the students, and Erin Kaminsky walked us around. And then, I attended Rossmore's back-to-school night. And I've also been to an Orange County School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting, two meetings with the cities of Seal Beach. I have an R O P meeting tomorrow. We have our unaudited actuals, and you know those eleven things? One, it's career technical education, most of them are just zeros, so it's much easier to read and understand and assimilate. And this weekend is also a Board of Directors meetings for the California School Boards Association, and so I will be in Sacramento, lovely downtown Sacramento, this weekend. So, yeah, and I can't go to the Taste of Los Al, because my son's getting married.
They sent me your airline confirmation by mistake.
They what?
They sent me your airline confirmation by mistake.
You got my airline confirmation? I won't even ask how that happened.
I gave them your email, so...
Oh, okay, I have one, yeah, that's great. Maybe Karen's coming.
They said make Cattulli, it wasn't Karen.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, you know, I went to the back-to-school breakfast as well, that was, was really an exciting event, as everybody's excited to get back. And when I got up and told about the, you know, how, when I was a teacher, I couldn't, every, every year for thirty-seven years, I couldn't sleep that night, and I go to Rossmore the next morning for the opening day, and this teacher says, oh, your fault, I woke up in the middle of the night, and she jinxed me, and I couldn't go back to sleep.
I know. That's what happens.
But anyway, so then I went, I did go to opening day at Rossmore, and that was Mrs. Belsha's first, first day as well. So, I ended up parking lot duty. My favorite thing to ever do when I was a teacher.
Parking kids is better.
Watching, and watching the bus get off and everything, and then Mr. Klavia came, and he went out and checked out the new playground, make sure everything was going well, and the kids were just loving that, of course. And then, later that week, they had a meet and greet for Mrs. Belsha as well with their flag ceremony, and that was a very nice event. We had quite a few parents attend that, and then I was able to go to the Los Al Chamber, and that, that's always a great event. We had a presentation by Seth Aker, who gave some interesting feedback on your life and that type of thing. And then, I'm, what's her name, the new gal? Wyman, Ms. Wyman, talked about the arts of craft fair today, and I worked both days